I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
All right, we're gonna have to amend the agenda tonight to add a new committee member for the Audit Committee. And there's been really also today, need a motion approved to be amended agenda. Matt, second amendment, any discussion, all in favor, did you vote? Thank you. All right, at this time, I'll hand over Dr. Kalman, introduce our Audit Committee member.
Yes, we do have a new Audit Committee member, Beth Jacobson. And Board, we'd like to welcome her. Beth has a great background, has already met with our Audit Committee Chairperson and just a great background in auditing, has spent time really looking at finances, and so we're really excited to have her as a community member join us. So we'd like to welcome her tonight, and she has her oath of office, if she could just read that out loud. She's already been given them, but we also want to have her reading out loud as well.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New York State, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Deputy Internal Claims Auditor for Wayne Central School District to the best of my ability.
Okay, I need a motion to accept Beth Jacobson, the Audit Committee member, carry me. Second, Carrie, all in favor. All right, next move along, we're gonna go to the recognition of our retirees, and we thank them for coming tonight. Kalman, start with your questions.
So we have some really great people who've spent quite a bit of time here at Wayne, collectively over 100 years of time with our students and our community, and all of them we would like to recognize tonight. So we're gonna first start by recognizing Mr. Terry Neville, who was with our district for over 12 years, a vivid bike rider, Yankee fan, from what I understand, very dependable, had excellent attendance, which is really great, well-liked and respected by all of his students and also peers, has worked as a bus driver and lunch monitor in our district. Terry had a passion for sports and has enjoyed driving athletic trips. He was especially fond of baseball and basketball, from what I understand, and many coaches would request Terry by name. He enjoyed watching the games and cheering for our students as well, and has worked, as I said, also in high school as a lunch monitor. So we just really appreciate all of the years of service, and we want to thank you tonight, on behalf not only of the district, but I know the Board also, which is a thank you. And Matt Prentzen has a certificate of appreciation for your years of service. And Jeremy Eaton has the next person recognized, then Carrie, and then Matt.
I have the honor of recognizing Mary Grace. I actually worked with Mary long ago when I was in high school, at the grocery store before it changed over to Tops. Mary is a devoted mother to her daughter Stephanie. The two are inseparable and spend most of their time together. They enjoy rummaging through garage sales, eating out, camping, and most recently started the vacation in Florida on a yearly basis. On entering the kitchen, you can rely on hearing Mary's voice over the hum of the fan. She would sing out loud to herself and others while going about her daily task. Mary ran the breakfast line at the high school for the last 10 years. She would sing to the students in line, recognizing their names and excusing them with a quick bye-bye. She was the morning greeter, putting smiles on sometimes unhappy faces and creating lasting relationships. Mary had the honor to be asked to attend graduation by several students as their person of significance. Just last year, she was asked to attend the National Honor Society Induction Dinner as a student special guest. Mary was a dependable staff member who rarely took time off. If she was out, students and teachers would go out of their way and ask where she was with concern. Her compassion towards students and staff was obvious and genuine. She had a welcome quick wit that sometimes turned heads, her attention to detail is sorely missed. We miss you already, Ms. Mary, and we wish you the best. And I have the honor of giving Mary her certificate for her retirement and the certificate pinned for 20 years of service to Wayne Central.
I have the pleasure of recognizing Bobby Sue Hasenauer, is that my name right? Hasenauer?
Okay.
In her eight years of working in the district, Bobby Sue's warm smile and friendly approach greeted hundreds of students that passed the halls of James A. Benoway High School. Bobby was a huge asset to us in the Counseling Department. Not only was she there to support our alumni, students, and staff, in many cases she was the point of contact for colleges, trade schools, and the military. This was a role she relished and excelled at. Recognizing the need for more students to have access to college fairs, Bobby was instrumental in organizing a college fair that afforded our students the opportunity to speak to 65 colleges firsthand during the day. Seeing that there was a need beyond the walls of Wayne Central, Bobby worked well with other Wayne County schools and invited them into this event as well. Planning, organizing, and overseeing this event and how well it was received is a true testament to the quality of work Bobby produced for Wayne Central over her eight years.
I have the privilege of reading some nice things about Bob Miller. I've known Bob Miller for over three decades. I knew him as a student, I knew him as an assistant principal and principal of Wayne Central High School, and then I knew him as a school board member. So we've got all together, he's got over 35 years of service in the district, and I think I've known him every one of those years. Bob has been very active, he's an avid gentleman, he's a hunter. He purchased a cottage up on Port Bay, and after he purchased that cottage, he then bought a kayak, and then he would bring pictures of the beach pass he caught back to the school to show everybody, so to make them envious. He also grows his own hops for adult beverages, and appreciates fine craft beer and spirits. Currently, he's splitting his time between his home here in Ontario, his cottage up in Port Bay, and recently, he's also becoming a Florida snowbird. And I learned tonight that he is also putting up the motel for sale, so that he can spend more time in Florida. Memorable moments during Bob's career, and I happened to be here that night. Shortly after the new concession stand was built, there was a homecoming game, and there had been an issue with the sewage backing up in the bedrooms, and that night it happened at homecoming. And so Bob came up and crawled down in the manhole, and what they found, Ian Teddy Heart out there, was that a tuba form was blocking the outflow from the sewage plant. So that's one of the things that he probably would like to forget. He took over an outstanding department, and he made it even better. And if you look at our buildings and grounds, we get a lot of compliments about the condition of our building and grounds, and that's due to his leadership and the hours that he's devoted to the district. He's extremely competent, it doesn't matter what the job is, Bob seemed to be able to get it done. And so we wish Bob and his wife Nancy the best of luck in his retirement after some 35 years with the district. Thank you, Bob.
We wish to again thank all of these wonderful people for their years of service. The short time that I've worked with all of you all, I have to say, what a pleasure to work with each of you. Thank you so very much on behalf of the students of Wayne and our staff, what a pleasure, thank you very much. Dr. Mike, I did say to them, if they wish to stay until 10:30 tonight with us because they don't want to leave us, that's fine. But if they wish to go now, there's certainly more they want to do.
I wish.
He wants to go home and water his garden.
Thanks, everybody, good seeing everybody again.
Thank you. Have a good night.
We are pretty entertaining, sometimes. All right, at this time, we'll entertain public comments. Remember, this meeting is held in public according to the old meetings law. It is not a public participation meeting, as the Board would value input from the public. So please come to the table, state your name and address for the Board Clerk, if anybody is interested in speaking. Do we have anybody I would like to address in the Board? Thank you. Board Member comments, are any Board Members making any comments tonight?
Yes, I'd like to recognize Lou Paul, who's a 2005 year old student at Wayne Central and a former varsity wrestling coach here, and he's currently a varsity wrestling coach at New York. And he will be inducted into the RIT Athletic Hall of Fame in October, so I think that deserves recognition.
Jeremy?
Last week, September 1st, we did the welcome into the buildings for parents, kids to meet the teachers and have the walkarounds, see the building layouts, and it was nice, I believe it was 1 o'clock or 2 o'clock at the elementary schools was, my kids and I drove by a quarter of, and there was a line halfway from the elementary school building to the primary school, and I just looked at them both and said, "Okay, we've been in this building numerous times, you have met your teachers, are we doing this?" "Yeah, park at the library, Dad, we'll walk." So we did, and I'm glad we did, because it was nice to meet all their teachers in that setting, and it was good to see all the families, all the kids, just so many people attending these events, it was very nice.
Tim, I'm, at our last meeting, we had a presentation on our Common Core scores, and we saw that we had made some good improvement in our Common Core scores, and the scores were broken out, and they were broken out by disadvantaged, and they were also broken out by students with special needs. But then after the meeting, I saw a newsflash from Business First that said that out of the 431 district substate, in four out of five districts, girls had scored better than boys on the Common Core. And we didn't have that breakout, and I wondered how we were doing on the Common Core. I know we've made gains, but do we have some gender equities as well, so if we could have that checked out?
I'll only add, I apologize for being late, I just got off an airplane, and I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what the Twinkie is, but I'll tell you. Well, I apologize for being late.
That's another one, Tim, I don't know, sorry. All the back-to-school bashes are tomorrow evening, and we'll, we'll be...
All right, now we'll move on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Kalman, would you share?
Absolutely, absolutely. Good evening, Board, a couple really great things. First, let me start with, we had, I think, a very smooth opening this year. Staff were back a day before, or a couple days before the kids. A welcome back day, I think, was well-received by our staff. We had a really great speaker in, Brian Lindberg, who worked with our entire staff, and we had a lot of fun on the day while learning. I put on the table with you some of the books from our speaker. Brian really does a lot with meeting the needs of all students, and you'll see through the books, just by the titles themselves, and by the, if you just read through it, you'll see his passion for reaching all kids, how it comes across in the literature. Our kindergartners also, I just had so much fun with them. I rode in the bus yesterday with one of them, and I just loved it. Kid sitting with me next on the bus, and halfway through the ride, getting on the bus was a challenge, but we got him going, and he was having fun, and he looks at me, and he says, "Pss, you wanna look at my lunchbox?" And we were able to get off the bus and get into class, and he just really, what a great day. So great start, couldn't ask for better, everything went extremely smooth. Glad to be back with all of our staff and students. We have a student highlight tonight. Over the summer, we had a young lady, Malin Jacek, who completed a five-week, pretty rigorous training program at Jiva Theater. It's a program for kids to work with artists and residents, and they're meant to provide these professional artists. And Jacek, excuse me, Malin did a really great job, so we're looking forward to seeing her perform this year in some of the things that we'll be having here within the district. So really proud of her. I want to just kind of shift gears for a moment and talk a little bit about our efficiency study. We just have a couple things that we need to kind of work through. Our engineers from King &amp; King were here today, and a couple more questions, and a couple other things that they wanted to kind of get answers on, just to make sure that they have all the correct data on. And so they need a couple more days to get their report done. We expect to have it within the next eight to 10 days, and as soon as I have it, I will certainly send that out, make sure we get that posted. They're still on track though to come for our September 22nd meeting. We'd like to come in to present to the Board their report. What, if the Board is okay, what they'd like to do is come from 7:00 to 8:30, give their presentation in a community public workshop, as we did with the other presenters. So that would be our next meeting. And so if okay with the Board, we'd like to do is try to have the meeting portion around 6:00 to 7:00, and then from 7:00 to 8:30 in the PAC Center, have that community workshop around the capital portion piece of the budget. Would the Board be okay with that? All right. So that is the King &amp; King portion. Now, the Saversky portion of the study, we'd like to also make one change with that. So we've had a couple community members who have already applied to be on the focus group. We also heard from a couple of community parents who said, "Listen, I'd really like to be on this, but we have a little conflict." On the 24th, in the afternoon, more in the afternoon than the morning, but also the morning, we have a couple of activities, it's our homecoming weekend, and so some of the parents who are gonna be helping with booster activities, you know, just watching their kids do some of the sports, have said, "Listen, I'd really, I'd like to be a part, could you consider moving the date?" If okay with the Board, I actually think that would be a great idea. I'd like to just move it a week later, to October the 1st, same time, 8:30 to 2:30. Dr. Saversky has already said that he and his team could certainly be there, and that gives the community a little more time. And also with regard to our application, we'll give folks another week as well, who might be interested to apply. Sorry, Saturday, yep, still a Saturday, it's just the following week. So if that is okay with the Board, we'd like to go ahead and do that, would that be acceptable? Okay, great. And then speaking of the entire study, so I have a proposed piece here that I'd like to share with the Board tonight in terms of moving forward with making some of our decisions. So I have a timeline that I am proposing tonight, and this is a work of art, so if the Board needs to come back and move this around a little bit, we can certainly do that, nothing is set in stone. But what, if okay with the Board, what we'd like to do is around September 22nd, we'd like to have the workshop in the PAC with Jim King and from King &amp; King, so he'll do his portion of the study. And then on October 1st, what we'd like to do is have the focus group that will be held in the high school cafeteria with Dr. Paul Saversky and the SES study team, so they'll work with the community then. On the 20th, what we'd like to do is have the Board of Education workshop around those focus group outcomes. Dr. Saversky will be back, and he'll spend time really just sharing with the Board, what did the community have to say, after hearing about all of the issues around efficiencies? What's the community really interested in? He'll give you a thorough report. I actually got a chance to see online one of the reports that he did for another district, and it's done very well, where he actually shows you first priority from the community, second thoughts, third thoughts. So he'll give you a nice thorough report on the 20th, if that would work out. And then around the 27th, what we'd like to do, we would have all of our information back. So I'd like to actually spend time with the Board, and I want to change that date. On your paper that's in front of you, it has the date of the 26th, on the PowerPoint it says 27th. So we want to switch that, it would be the 26th of October. But I'd like to do, say, Wednesday, just before the New York State School Boards Association piece. So I'd like to see if we could have a Wednesday night Board workshop. And we'd like to just share and bring all the data together, look at all of it together, and see what the study is saying. And at that time, if acceptable by the Board, I'd like to make some recommendations, now that we have all the information back from the perspective of the Chief School Officer here within the district. So I'd like to share that with the Board around the 27th. And then on the 3rd, if the Board has all information, and if the Board is all set and able to do so, we'd like to, if possible, be able to make some decisions around that time as to where we're headed as a district. So you have all of your information, your focus group, everything will be there in front of you. And if you are able to, we'd like to see if we could do something around the 3rd in terms of making some kinds of decisions to move forward. Why the 3rd? Because around November, we really need to start planning for the next school year, because the budget vote and budget season begins, and our team is gonna need that amount of time to kind of be able to plan and put things in place for the next new school year, if at all possible. And then between November to December, we would create a schedule and a scope of efficiencies and kind of make sure that we know what we're gonna do and when we're gonna do it, based on what the Board decides. And then January to June, and further on, we would be moving forward with enacting whatever efficiencies that the Board sort of goes. But please note, that as we do this, when we have that big workshop, I will also share with the Board, again, efficiencies, we'll look at all the recommendations, what have we already done, and then things that we can do in the near future. So I'll be going through all of those things in that workshop that I'll be presenting with. Any questions about that, wondering your thoughts, would you be in agreement with this? Keeping in mind that this is a flexible schedule, if we need to move things around, we can.
The only thing, excuse me, I'm not available on Wednesdays, and I would really not want to miss that.
Okay. We could look at another night, we could do that Tuesday if you were lucky, if you wanted to change it to Tuesday, I would be fine with that. Tuesday the 25th.
Cause I, my other job was Wednesday nights only.
Tuesdays are tough for me, but let me just look at it. Other thoughts besides the dates?
All right, although I understand, we have the community focus group, and obviously this is a little bit of a living, breathing timeline. Is it something that we can put up as a draft copy on the website, so the community is fully aware of the expected timeline for decisions?
Yes.
I want to make sure that it's not a surprise.
Absolutely, that will be our thought, if the Board is okay. We plan to go right out, Amy and I have already talked, and we would be moving all this information out to the public tomorrow, starting to get it right out there, so people know it's happening. 25th, Tuesday night, would that be okay? Yeah. All right, and would you like to start at like a 5:30 or 7 o'clock?
5:30.
5:30?
Yes, we're being long.
So we'll do 5:30. We have a Board meeting, yes, I think it's on the 8th of October, I can't remember the date off the top of my head, but I think it's the 8th.
6th.
6th, excuse me, the 6th, I apologize. Are we good? Board, would you be all right with that, that timeframe? Okay, so we will get that information out to the public and to our community right away on tomorrow. Okay. Just want to also share with you, Boards, shifting gears now from the study, in terms of the tax rule, there is a change that will be forthcoming on our tax rules for the 2016 year. We were informed by the county that the tax rules for 2016 needed to be adjusted after we set our tax rates. There was a property apparently that was coded incorrectly that was on the rules. And once the correction is made, it will change the taxable value for the town of Ontario. We've already gotten the information, and so the bills went out correctly, and we can have this backlog. We already changed some of those, but Greg will be here, he's out today, he's on his honeymoon from his wedding. So Greg will be back with us in just two weeks, and we will share all the information with you. But we wanted to make sure, I just gave you a heads up, that there would be an adjustment on the tax rules because a property had been coded incorrectly, and we just got that notification from the county. And then I wanted to just, on another note, share some, two more things with you. In terms of water testing results, you know that we've been testing our different water areas throughout the entire district. We finished up another round of testing, we had, if you remember correctly, we had six or seven spots left. All of them but one passed, one spot still remains, one tap in Freewill, it's number 3J, and it is not a drinking water faucet, it's one that the water just runs as you wash your hands with. But that test came back still a little bit higher than the 15 parts that we need. So we are remediating that area, we shut it down, it's not open. And our goal at this time is to basically take the entire, take it out and take the pipes out. I think that's the only way we're gonna get that area completely remedied, remediated, so we will be doing that. And then hopefully we will get our results back in for that one spot, that'll be it. You should know that the state is also, if you haven't heard already, they finally signed some things into legislation. The good news is that we've already been ahead of this, so we did all of our testing last year, if you already done it? You did great, so you have to keep doing this stuff now, yearly we're gonna be doing this. But we've already started our piece, and last year's testing does come towards this year, which is good. And we were all concerned about the threshold, was it gonna be 15, or 12, or 10? It came back as 15. So we've actually, we're ahead of many districts who decided not to test last year, so we're all set with that, basically. Okay? So we'll be letting you know about that one piece, and all that information, by the way, is up on our website for the community to see as well. And then my last piece that I'll share tonight is around the Smart Schools Bond Act. So as we were doing our budget, we talked about the Smart Schools Bond Act, how there is a significant amount of money for each district, and you have to basically meet a couple requirements from the state. And then you would have monies to be able to expend on technology, technology improvements. It could be used for security or expansions in terms of classrooms, pre-stool classrooms. So we plan this year to use some of our smart schools monies for security and also technology upgrades that we need. But before you can do that, there's one last piece that we have to have, and it's a public hearing. So what we'd like to do, we're gonna look at our calendar, look for some dates, possibly that October 6th meeting, since we don't have much on that agenda. You can hold the hearing, by the way, as a part of the Board meeting, from what I understand. I want to clarify that, but I did hear that today. But around that timeframe, we'd like to basically have the hearing. It'll be about a 30-minute hearing, maybe 40 minutes at the most. And what we'll do is share in the hearing our vision around technology, how we plan to utilize the funds, and then take question and answers from the community if there are any. Once that is done, that's our final piece, we tell the state that we did that. And then, once we get our final approval, we're all set to now begin to expend that pot of money from that big program, from Smart Schools, basically. Any questions about that? Would everybody be okay with us moving forward with that? Okay? So we'll be back in touch around that hearing. Okay, so we're gonna shift gears now, we're gonna call Dr. Sarah Hughes up. And Dr. Sarah Hughes shared with us recently the 3 through 8 results. And tonight, he's going to also answer the question that you had around gender outcomes. So he's gonna spend a little time talking about our Regents exams tonight, and then he'll go back to the 3 through 8 outcomes around gender. So hopefully we'll be able to answer the question, and you share with us.
I know it's, you know, it's hard to see, the graphs and charts, and you sometimes want to put back and forth, so hopefully these are, these are good for you. As, as Dr. Kalman said, tonight I'm gonna be presenting both the Regents results. I have disaggregated them as per our strategic plan by our students in poverty and our students with individualized education plans. I've also pulled them out by females and males, so you can see where that is. Now, the Business First report does show that four out of five school districts have girls outperforming boys on the 3-8 assessments. I think you're gonna see in this, pretty much, we follow suit with that, the gap isn't so large, but we'll talk about that as we go. So first, our Regents results overall. So we, this chart shows, reflects every Regents exam we gave last June. Now, some kids will take one Regents exam in a year, some will take two in a particular year, and some will take as many as three in a given school year. So each of these, each of these data points aren't individual students, but they represent each exam given. Last year, we gave 1,653 exams, our proficiency rate was 86%. The year before, our proficiency rate was also 86%. You can see our mastery rate, that's the 620 kids on the far right. This year, we had 37.5% at mastery, we think that's a pretty good number. Years ago, when we used to set targets for mastery, we always said, "Hey, let's at least get 1/3 of our kids to mastery." But as I go through the individual tests, you'll see there are some tests where the mastery rates are very, very high, and there are some where, you know, we got some work to do toward those, toward that 1/3 goal. So we did bump up our mastery rate just by about a percent and a half, last year it was 36% on all Regents exam scale. So we continue to have some pretty good results with the Regents. So first, we're gonna take a look at the math results, there are three math Regents exams. All three of them are now Common Core Regents exams, that's algebra, geometry, and then algebra II. I'll talk to you about this first graph to just kind of orient you to it, and then the other graphs should go a little bit quicker. So because I, to the far right, that's our results for all students. And what you'll see is the blue is the 2015 school year, and the red is the 2016 school year for proficiency. For proficiency, proficiency is any score of a 65 or higher. And then we also track our mastery rate. So you can see the green is from 2015 and the purple is from 2016. So you can see that on our Common Core Algebra, one of our concerns last year was our mastery rate. We had, I'll remind the board that this exam is typically given in ninth grade and we have accelerated eighth graders. This chart reflects all of the exams given, both eighth and ninth grade. And so you know, our eighth grade passing rate was 100% and our eighth grade mastery rate was actually 38%. But overall, and the year before, we only had, I think, did I say one or two kids the year before reached mastery? So we were very concerned about that as a system and we see that that's moving in the right direction. The graph to the right of the all is our students with individualized education plans. You see a significant jump there from that 38 to 67%. We want to continue to see that, that number rise, obviously. And then our students in poverty continue to lag behind the all group. And the pattern will be not as significantly as our students with disabilities. One of the things you'll see, if you look at the red, that's the current school year for boys and girls. You could see that the girls do and are outperforming the boys on this Algebra exam. As far as the orientation to the graph, are we good with that? Is that good? All right. Next is geometry. We did struggle this year with geometry and the team is not happy with the results. We see a little bit of a dip from our all and that dip holds true for our students with disabilities, for our students from economically disadvantaged homes, and our females and males. So the dip is across all subgroups. One of the things I will tell you is that of the three math Regents exams, I've spoken to a lot of ASIs regionally. It's common for the geometry exam this year to lag behind the other two Regents exams, the Algebra I and the Algebra II. That said, you know, we're going to be looking at that data at the standard level and looking for opportunities to bolster those results and better prepare our kids for those exams. This is the first year that we gave the Algebra II. We're all in now in math for Common Core. All three exams are Common Core Regents exams. Very pleased with these results, obviously. When you see that dip for specialized kids, I just want to point out that we had a total of three specialized kids in this pool. Two out of three passed it. So while that 67% significantly lags, it becomes very difficult when you're comparing, you know, 118 kids, you're pulling out three and looking at how they did. But still, I think, I think two out of three for our first year, we'd rather have it be three out of three, of course. You see, this is the one place, the only place where our economically disadvantaged kids at 100% actually beat the average. So, but at those numbers, I don't really think it's significant, but it's worth pointing out. And the boys and the girls were tied with the girls having a significantly higher mastery rate on this exam. Now, Common Core ELA, just so you know, we did give the Common Core ELA last year for the first year, but we only gave that to our 10th graders, our accelerated students. So the year-to-year comparison is a little bit skewed. You'll look at that and you might say, geez, Joe, you know, you dipped a little bit here. Well, we didn't have the full population, we didn't test the full population that first year. And we still think these results were pretty good. For example, our second set of graphs for our IEP students, we didn't have any students with IEPs take that exam. And this year, we had 19 out of 26 reach proficiency and, you know, four of those 19 were at the mastery rate. You could see this is probably a more significant gap between the males and females with a 10% range there. 98% passing rate for the girls, 88% for the boys. Mastery rates seem to compare a little favorably for the girls as well. Our next set of exams will be the sciences. Two out of four sciences went up this year. Two out of four sciences dipped a little bit. Earth science is a dip from 91 proficiency last year. We had 84% proficiency this year. You know, when you look at these things, you want to look at all the factors. You don't want to make excuses. We have three earth science teachers though, and one of our earth science teachers was on maternity for half of the school year, the second half of the school year. We know the importance of the classroom teacher in the room and that can have, those transitions can have an impact. But that team will look closer at that data to see what's going on there. When you look at our special education population on this particular graph, you had 10 out of 16 kids in 2015. This year, you had 14 out of 28. So that's that dip there from 75 to 50%. And yet again, actually, our girls and boys were equal in 2016 in their passing rates with 84% dipping from the year before. They both dipped. And you could see the mastery rates were fairly equal at 38 and 40%. Living environment, otherwise known as biology. Thrilled with these results, honestly. You look at our special education, 100% of the kids this year, up from 67% last year. That is 14 out of 14 students passing that exam, three of those 14 at mastery. You know, we had an integrated co-teach, class 24, and we had a co-teach with Mrs. Lindsay, a veteran bio teacher, and Mr. Tennis, and they were working hard to get those kids to that standard and, you know, they all passed. So everybody's very excited about these results, I think, across the board. They're good. Our mastery rates are good. We'd like to see our special education mastery rates climb up there with their peers. But all in all, I'm pretty happy, the team is pretty happy with those results. And you see in chemistry, we jumped up to a 92% passing rate. You might look at that Special Ed and say, wow, you're down by a quarter. Need to point out there, in 2015, three out of four kids met the standard. In 2016, two out of four kids met the standard. So again, very small sample size. Boys and girls are very tight again in this graph. And our students in poverty are really right up there with their peers at 88%. A little 4% lag there. Physics, a little bit of a dip with physics, as you could see, in our proficiency rate. But we had 100% of our special education students take and pass that exam. And actually, that is one student and that student achieved mastery. So there. But still, you know, one of the things we start to see with some of our students with disabilities and students with IEPs is they don't necessarily take those higher-level sciences. So we need to get them there and we need to make sure that they're successful. And again, girls did outperform boys on the physics as well. So that pattern continues. We rebounded nicely with global. Last year, we had an 82% backup where we feel like we should be with global. At 90% last year, we had a little bit of a dip in our performance. And really, our mastery rates pretty much across the board are pretty good. They've done a lot of work with the new social studies frameworks. They're infusing inquiries. You know, there's been a delay in the change on the global regions. Eventually, in a couple of years, it'll be a one-year exam, but they're already starting to adjust. We're well ahead of other districts in that regard. They're working. We had a vertical team with 7 through 10 this summer, work to talk about social studies and the frameworks and what we're doing at each grade level and making sure that we continue to kind of build that scare case up so kids grow from year to year in a systematic and predictable way. And then US history, we continue to do very well in US history. We're always up around 90, you know, low 90s. This year, it's 93%. Our special education kids dipped a little bit to 65 and just to let you know, that's 20 out of 31 students with IEPs. And then our economically disadvantaged students, they rose a little bit from 85 to 87, not significant. But they're also pretty close to that all at 87 to 93. Not saying that's where we need it to be because we always want to get to equal, but you know, I think that at the high school level, our kids are performing well from all, across sections. And the females, again, outpaced the males in this one. So if you're keeping score, the girls are winning and we do reflect the Business First report, but I don't think as significantly. So here, that is our Regents. The Business First was about our 3/8. So the next couple of slides are just going to give you a quick insight into where we were with business, with girls against boys on the 3/8. What Business First does is they take all of the exams. So if you think about 3 to 8, that's six math and six science, that's 12 exams. They treat them all the same. You know, they treat them all the same and they look at your total passing, your total proficiency rate. Those are your kids who scored a 3 or 4. So let's say for easy numbers, you have 100. If 60 girls were proficient and 40 boys were proficient, then girls made up 60% of your proficiency. That could be different than your passing rate. Ours are very close, so I just wanted to express that to you. So if you look at this graph, this shows our proficiency rate. We had 44% of our boys were proficient and on the math and ELA, and 56% of the girls were proficient. So when you look at of our 3, 4 numbers, that number is actually pretty much the same. It's just rounds. So it's 56 and 44% of our proficiencies are. When you break it down by ELA and math, you'll see that the lion's share of the difference happens in ELA. I don't think that's a big surprise to anybody, but the math is a 52-48 split and the English is that 60-40 split. So we do see, we do see the girls outperforming the boys at higher rates and more significantly in ELA. So just like with the 3/8, you know, it's important for us to utilize the data. I've had conversations with Mr. Pohn. I've had conversations with Mrs. Shannon about how we're using the data administratively. They're looking at their teams. They're looking at their departments. Departmentally, they're looking at their courses. And teachers have their individual grades. They actually have it by standards. So they'll be able to identify which standards they did well with and which standards they did not do well with. They'll also be able to see how, what their gap is to the region. So in other words, it's one thing to say, boy, only 25% of our kids met this standard. But if you look at, if you look at that against the region, because there's, because there's a lot of things going on, how do we compare with the region? If we see that regionally, other districts are performing well against that standard, that's a real opportunity for us to target that standard and get that standard, you know, get our kids' proficiency with that standard. So being strategic with what we're doing. And the high school has some great structures to do that. They have team leaders. They have department meetings. They have team meetings, which would be, so three teachers teach algebra, they're a team. And then they have their professional learning communities that are really built on looking at data, using data to engage in continuous improvement, continuous learning opportunities and to make adjustments as we go. So I'll take any questions you might have. I know, I hope that felt quick to you because the last thing I want is to feel long. If you have any questions, I'll take them. Otherwise.
Was there a gap statewide on the geometry versus Algebra I and Algebra II?
So I haven't been, so I can tell you, yes, but I haven't been able to physically see that data myself. We were surprised. Algebra II, as you know from your time, that was the tough one. And so we did really well. Regionally, we all did pretty well. I think we did really, I mean, 98% is awesome, honestly. Those teachers worked very hard, but yes, geometry was a struggle in the area. And I think statewide, I would not, my expectation is that that's true.
The other question I would have, Joe, is in the future. On those exams that are left, for example, like physics or chemistry or Algebra II, could we see a percentage of the class that tries to take the exam each year?
Okay, absolutely. Absolutely.
So thank you, Joe. But just, you know, Board, just keep in mind, as you can see, we see some growth around our schools. You know, when we disaggregate the data, kids with disabilities, kids who live in poverty. We're going to continue to try to work really hard around that and also the piece with regard to gender. How do we have similar performance across the board as opposed to one or two groups, one or the other group is going higher than the other? How do we bring it so that all kids are continuing to have similar outcomes? We're going to continue to monitor our data and as Joe already talked about, going to spend some time really disaggreging that data and looking at what standards we're challenged with, which ones do we do great on, and how do we continue to build in terms of the momentum? So we'll continue to look at that and we'll be back to talk more. But with that said, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Now, Board's going to move through the action items listed on the agenda that were in our packet. So first thing we need most to approve is the budget transfer. Dennis, carry. Second, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Now we need the motion to approve the code contact. Brown, second, Bill. Any discussion? All in favor? Any votes? Now we need the motion to approve the athletic training services agreement. Man, second, Carrie. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Moving on to our set agenda. Need a motion to approve the set agenda. Dennis, second, Brown. Do you have any comments on that?
They're just, you know, those are paper that minutes from August 11th meeting. Then there is personal action to approve, if I remember correctly, one of our teachers that just came in, our Spanish teacher, if I remember, Bob.
I was just talking to him.
There. And then just D and C recommendations from the Treasury.
All right. All in favor? Moving on to our committee reports. Jeremy, with the communication committee.
Due to a couple of absences from our committee, we postponed our meeting until this evening. It'll be moved to the 22nd at 5:30 here in the district office.
Our committee man?
You know, we'll be meeting the 15th of this month, this room, 5:00 PM. Going over technical planning, having to get rid of that, planes on there, planes on there reports and possibly our masterclass report and whatever other things that we have to do to follow up on that.
Thank you. Policy committee, Carrie.
Tonight, we had our first meeting at 5 o'clock and we went over policies 1611, 3210, 6215, 7616, 3220, and 7220. All the changes that are being recommended are coming down from Erie Number 1 Bose's to comply with this current New York State law. So first reads will be coming out shortly for the board. Our next meeting is Thursday, October 6th at 5:00 in High School Room 8. Plus, it's really hot again in the High School room back.
For present comment, just a couple of comments on the opening day. The energy that we saw from the administrators, dancing, going to music. And then the powerful speaker that you brought in was wonderful and can impact a lot of teachers. You could see it, their eyes and their actions and some of the comments afterwards. So I think that was a good opening day and it started off the school year very well. All right. This time, I'll move to go to the second session for discuss CSEA negotiations and performance of particular staff members, school security and litigation. Dennis, second, Brown. All in favor? To the second session.